Evening, this is Nellie's TV. Please, we are going into a Aludho town hall meeting. I'm sorry, I'm coming late. I'm sorry, I'm coming late, okay? Please, wherever you are, join me, join me as we go live to support Aludho. Okay? I welcome everyone, I welcome everyone in this studio. May God bless you as you support Aludho. Come and let's share, please, as you come in, hit the like button, subscribe and share, very important, please hit the like button. Hit the like button, hit the like button, subscribe and share, very important. Okay, so let's go. Right.
For Otah, Honorable Isaac Otah, to take up the mic and welcome the guest and also present us the state uh welcome address. Honorable Otah, please.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Hope I can be heard clearly.
Yes.
Yeah, loud and clear, go ahead.
Okay. Your Excellency, the Acting Prime Minister, the Information Minister, Aludho citizens, esteemed guests and fellow citizens of our beloved nation Biafra. It is an honor to represent our state administrator today, and I bring greetings from him. As we gather here, I want to express our gratitude to the Acting Prime Minister for his tireless efforts in fighting for our freedom despite the distant distractions that we just experienced. Our state Aludho is blessed with abundant human and natural resources, including agriculture, tourism and minerals. We are proud of our rich heritage and look forward to harnessing these resources for the benefit of our people as soon as our Biafra is fully liberated. However, we have recently faced challenges from within our own ranks. Where some individuals chose to form another group claiming that our uh APM does not carry everybody along in decision making. But the truth is that the, those that are generally fighting for freedom are not dealt with what is happening. We in Aludho have taken a stand that we are not following anybody. We are ensuring that Biafra is fully liberated, that is our quest. And we have decided to have that Sisu spirit in us. So as the Bible says, that whoever is holding the plow and looks back is not fit for the kingdom. So those who have compromised their values and principles are not fit to lead a struggle for freedom. So the actions have revealed their true intentions and they have been uh gone solo by within themselves out. So we thank our faithful members for not inheriting the other people's hatred and problems. Like my dad always, there's one case that my dad narrated to me. When, one of the days he went to the village and he said everybody was angry that he went to visit a neighbor uh claiming that he has a problem with him. So it made it clear to him that he cannot inherit his own problem with someone. So, and we in Aludho have made a stand and we expect every other person, uh every other Biafra, to make the same stand that they cannot inherit other people's problems, enmity, whatever. So we in Aludho knows that he has not done anything wrong to us and will not be swayed by all the things that are happening today. All we are after is to ensure that the Biafra is fully restored. So as we say in our local parlance, meaning that the more one tries to peep, the more the head comes out. The more they try to hide, some people try to hide their motives, the more they give themselves away. So it's time for us to focus and forget about all distractions and move forward for the total liberation of our nation, which is closer than we think. So let's work together to achieve a goal of freedom and prosperity for all. God bless Mazan and the Kano, God bless Prime Minister Simon Nekba, God bless our APM, God bless Aludho State and its citizens, God bless Brigi, that is going to be the umbrella that will take us to unite this Biafra, God bless Biafra. Ebon, Ebon, Ebon.
Ebon. Thank you, Honorable Deputy, thank you very much, thank you. Uh but the ball is still on your court, uh to invite the next for the color breaking. So please, then you get that service to
Yes, yes.
Over to bread the cola for us.
Uh the next thing is for us to bread the cola so that um we commence the um the village meeting, the meeting proper. I hereby on Namak want to come forward and do the egogi, Namak.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here already.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Uh I want to welcome everybody that have come here this evening to honor our invitation. I say my Lord, I bring you, return you back to your destination in peace. I, our custom and our tradition is when somebody comes to our place, we present a cola note, always remember. The Bible says we should let our moderation be known by all men, so this is our moderation, we will not miss it. So I'm going to bread the cola note, unfortunately, Nekba, I've just taken my lights and I can't go out on the generator, you know how this place look like. So that they will not call, when they call me, I will not be around, so I will not, you will not see the cola note because there is no light here, right away. Chukwokikobiama. Obasi biye de biye lu. Odebe lo oboda ya kwa. Anya biya lekwa lo doa ambascho. Mama basan da biya nyani. Da biya nyadi maiku kuwa biya. Nketasi okwe kwe kwa baga hi. Lagai kuwa wa biya. Ainasa wa ha wa biya goroje. Chukwokike. Ogwe oye kuwaini jo. You're then us for this assignment. Ogwe kuwaini hambia me hemosa the last miracle of the world, would be full restoration of the sovereign state of Biafra. Oh, if I John, he find him eh. Ainah aroka aloku mu. Obasi dienu bebe na nyoji. Ikedum de alibo. Ikedum de alibi afu. Nu be abonayoji. Na muo, nu be abonayoji. Ndechi na Aludho, nu be abonadu bradu bradu jeta. Ndete mi bana, nu be abonadu jeta. Nduweke, nu be abonadu jeta. Nda bre bana chokun, nu be abonadu jeta. Nduu moi manyu, nu be abonadu jeta. De uh all these counties do through du mu noji. Nda akara, aha ora Aludho, nu be abonadu jeta. Chukwokike. Ainalo kugo, ibira muwa, opa desia ni rifa one, taya wu den rokwaro. I am merely dedicate our life, our time, our resources, our virtue to you, even on this struggle. Ainasi ebere ugo bere. Gesi behebe topa. Awogo ya ankuya izaya, ife ye twi onu, iri riya na ra yako. He said.
He said.
The Ude ma mi nu be abonadu jeta. Kamala sefe. Ote te amanoma, nu be abonadu jeta. Ifi joko ndoka nu be abonadu jeta. Nde na ni wo nu be abonadu jeta. Aide wo noe bo bo na bo wojio. Ojo obano, oji bua bano, eké, be abonadu jeta. Afu, be abonadu jeta. Oye, be abonadu jeta. Mpo, be abonayoji. Obazu, obazu mwa mwa jee, adewa oza no, awo jibo. Ife de mejeni bozi, nu be abonadu jeta. Udu mini biya gwa abonayoji. Halima, uka di ku yozu andanda. Okochu nu be wera nyoji. Odu odu biya kutsiwa nta go okochi. Eru du manyu kuweli ya ja, unu kuweli ya ya ja. Ndechi no, ndechi na ni, ndechi na Aludho, ndechi na Rafia, ndechi ni bana, ndechi na pa, ndechi na ruchuku, ndechi ni hechua wa, nu be abonayoji, nu be abonadu jeta oba. Anya biya lantemo, unu bueni du pu, uloke putokuhi fremani, lagawa mbia, mi fremi tokwani, unu duzea ni duzea. Nde du mo kuwese metwa kobi, unu mani fine kuwe mea, haba ye hushinha map, ife kuwene mi fuwa mbaga. Omre ma ni birindo, bando huwa wu, lagawa wu sagerindo for the past fifty something years. Ainu roge, legede wa ma wu may, ancho hobi ba hi fuani, hara mara, osua boranshe, ai fine konase, nu be abonayoji. Ibo, mama.
Yo.
Anama alokuwa wa, acting SA, oba abonadu jee.
Okay, Tanwa. Yeah, Deputy, Deputy, yes, I think.
The Deputy SA.
Lots of, sorry.
Be abonayoji. Ogu mo, oke mo me.
Chok, chok, Aludho, Tanwa.
Wa.
Aludho, lienwa.
Wa.
Wa.
Aludho, waanwa.
Wa.
Uh I see, I'll janegasu, omega supeke, so why not, I ge, eku luanyu, mea ya. Uh ma seha, ngore um ten thousand AJ, AJ, gi gore akojim, Kanwa.
Ebe boke, obore haloji, ama abona akojim, legonye wa no, ojo ya wu na muu. As the father of the house, I have to call him first of all to come and pick the cola. They're no goye woje, me bo rakashim, ajin ten thousand AJ, nabonadu jee, on my behalf. With a five thousand AJ, nabonadu jee, on behalf of Rafia County, that will fifteen thousand AJ. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My J man, over to you.
Yes. So Unukawa.
Gassa.
So, yes, uh ogebrenamabu. Uh off here now, uh we don't speak so much grammar when a word is uh um when a word is concerned. Despite that we've been doing so much manylu these days, the nominal. So uh please, Biafrans, Nde Aludho, this is RJ, it has been broken for us to eat. Uh because uh I said that uh onya wasaraji wasarando, onya na kwa atata ya takarando. Uh that is always the ancient prayers of our forefathers. So as we eat the cola today, we will eat life out of it. Uh nke chukoo, uh nke chukoo okika biya. So in support of the RJ, ama popara, RJ came for the many, which hundred AJ ma uh of Kanwa, so please. The RJ is open for all, please, we need the hands up for come and represent your counties, your unit, your district. So that when you get them, you tell them where the cola is coming from, as well, RJ roll, ya, ya koi bossa. So please come and pick the cola, that you tell your people where it is from, it is from Aludho. Unukawa.
Gassa.
So please, counties and also it will be open for all, all friends of Aludho and other states. Uh whoever wants to pick RJ can also come up now regardless. Thank you, Honorable Otah, you go on, you have, I think you have cooked, always.
Yeah, yes, yes. Yes, I want to on behalf of um um Aban County uh Roger with five thousand AJ.
Okay.
Uh thank you.
That's you. We move.
Yes.
Is a, is a, is a wale. Is a, is a, we is a wale.
So please, we need the hands up for cola notes. The cola is broken and it it must be eaten. Ah, okay, I'm not seeing it, sorry, and you can also. Uh, okay. One, twenty.
Omu Biafran, de wano.
De wano.
Nde Aludho.
De wano.
There were. There were.
On behalf of Omwada, Imeni, and AJ twenty AJ ma, paranzo.
Oh, wonderful.
Oh, 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 konaka, oh, konaka.
Omu manyu, is du du mu manyu.
Yo mu manyu, omwado mu manyu.
Okay.
Nde akada, yes.
Yes.
Imeni. Imeni.
Uh Namak, you are taking records, eh?
Yes, I'm doing that.
Okay, okay.
And that is the cast he helped me.
Uh sorry. It's out.
No, don't worry.
We here why it's one in the one. I don't know. So that I won't make mistake.
Okay, uh, uh, Betty, okay, okay, sir, okay, yeah. So please, uh.
Good evening.
Uh good evening.
Good evening, my brother.
Before, I'm just seeing you now.
Oh, good man.
How is everything?
I got the hell no matter, okay.
Uh, okay, um, yes, uh, uh, why the, uh, why a chuku, uh, you go on.
Eh, nde wano, ndaludo, nde wano, ndaludo.
De wano.
Omu manyu nu na kwa ya eh.
Eh, and I, I drew chin.
Ma seke, nde wano.
Ah, nde wa, kela, kela, oh, uh, oh, eh.
Where go?
No, ifo ma.
Oh, ifo ma kawo.
Uh, yes.
Kawo wena.
In there, uh.
That one.
Imasina.
In there, in there, buka ama.
Thank you. Well, then we can.
Yes.
That one, oh, you guys are doing well.
Muana manzu, yes.
Muwa, they took that zone, took that zone.
But the, now the last one, eh, our Able Information Minister, Nawa ni wogoliche, wetenyezie dia. So. Um du. Sorry, I know me ni.
See, gure jenidigima, orechiwa, karamagufu. The Lord is our open, is the proof.
Gorula, goru, omu ime. Nde wetena handu, omu ime, twenty thousand, nde wun, kaina gawa.
Ndewa, thank you very much, thank you. Ndewa, yes, Emanasna, uh, Akaru, Egaru, uh, yes, Omuanyawun Sukahana, Bawa Madha, Actually, with Roger, Agawo, for Nnamuola. Uh, I had a make and the, in the cause our, Ebroji, Naga Feha, Maya, Maya Kana, Okoji, Woji.
Yes.
Ndewa, yes, uh, why that, in Kuru, go on, please.
Hmm, yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you, my brother, okay. Okay. Aha, so chukwakika biya ma, oka na tapana ni today. Andka uzinkili ibo, kana susaiha.
I don't know RJ, so ona, oh, ibo kana.
Allah, wait, no, children, I don't beke.
Okay, um, our APM, anye ke nega, yes, okay, so, um, I uh ma zeku numbers, se me was noji, uh huh, na angala, kame we, okay, good. Okay, so I were nanum angala, and may, I were the angala with fifty AJ ma, eh. Kai, where do, kudu ka, where do you go for say.
Ata mara ma sae da koro, umki ruka o, ata mara ma.
Uh, thank you.
Good evening.
Bless you, God bless you.
Minister Betty.
Hello Chi.
Thank you.
Honorable Chi, yeah. One name, the halo, um, Kuru mara mande, one name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, man, I tried some more, God bless you.
Uh, Adachi, Ndewa.
Ndewa, one of the, oh, kiwa akao, Kuru.
Thank you, Minister Betty. Thank you, Chi.
That one. Okay. Well done.
Yeah, um, why that Bridget?
Ako domo wanita, she never came, I'm like, better.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to, Gafya, Gafya, Tainho Fe.
Hmm. Aludho, nde wano.
Ndewa.
Okay. And Aludho Prime, uh, APM. Um, omuanyine, lakunuku, ona dianya seso. Ke mebe mebe, asane kuwa ne me me. Um, Anama sekuwa, ebado kuwe besis tan Kuru ka. Kaina support Aludho, kai we rangana, as no wa angana. Kamso puya we rangana with um fifty AJ ma, it is a.
Wow. Akabiko.
And they.
I'm getting there, uh, music, give her music, give her music.
Namak, Namak, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go there, you just.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Uh huh, okay. Ifo, ifo muwai je, di kwa li mea, hai, watangana, ani, kobe.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Aha.
God bless you, Sister Bridget.
Akamara ma kaega, kongo Sister Bridgeto, ata mara ma.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Updates.
You're welcome.
Updates.
Yeah.
Uh, would that an update?
Yeah, go on.
Uh, Ezebina Biafra, um, is using five thousand AJ, he Woji. He said network is disturbing him, so he is not able to enter. Ezebina Biafra, five thousand AJ.
Thank you, thank you, Ezebina Biafra, God bless you.
Thank you, Ezebina Biafra, Ndewa, we appreciate.
Thank you.
Yes, so, uh, why that Nena? Uh, Niama, sorry, why that Niama?
Okay, okay, Honorable, okay. I can't tell me to the alpha.
Move. We may go.
I'm.
Niama, Niama. Blackywa, I'm gonna make it.
You got na, na army. Uh, we said, we said come them by, kuwa beteslamani.
Uswadi, oh, kwa nama, nama, isizi bata na zoomo, oh, kwa eduwa na bata regen, bonama, is a nama two. He have a nama number one, since two thousand and twenty, twenty one. Okwezi okuwa da love. Yes. Eh, Honorable, eh, eh, Chiya, okwezi oku kankuru. Okay, okay, okay. Okay, oh, that's okay, oh, that's okay, ah, and I come as opposed, be quick, ake ne mo nyawa na na, nde, nde we na, nde we, that one, we couldn't. Before, eh, one of the love, I could form na cut of October.
Uh, I think. Today, no one here got popular about it today.
We couldn't, can I speak for a minute?
Yes.
Please do.
Uh. I'm gonna say, Dogenada.
Yeah, you could be a ninja. I'm surprised. You, you, you are what he, yeah.
No, 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 no hiding for the children of Biafran, I spot, point out immediately.
Yes, so.
Ah, that is the, that is the role, that is the law. So that shows that we know ourselves.
Thank you, thank you baby. God bless you them.
Thank you. I'm gonna have one thing.
Baptizing them, we are now with the Madame NK.
Thank you baby.
Thank you.
I did the Baptizing them.
Is that the galaxy, ah, galaxy KJ, but is it a galaxy tab?
Ah, this is good for us.
Is it a galaxy? Are you the one, ah, on galaxy tab or?
No, there's another person.
No.
Okay, so then a galaxy, then go and pick the mic please.
Ah, wait, you're. Okay. I meet yourself galaxy tab A. Galaxy tab A, can you meet yourself?
Eh, can I come on, oh, nde wo.
There were.
I boom, I'm, that's the last I can speak. I can't speak Hebrew very well. I'm from ICOM State. On behalf of ICOM State, I want to pick the garden egg. And also welcome the APM for visiting Alaudo. I'm going to donate a hundred egenma and I'll send the receipt to Sonia Parawa.
Wow, wow.
Adiaga.
Wow.
Thank you.
So, 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 so. Wow, I think I, I, they don't reach five, they don't reach five people to, um, to sing for them or one more?
Oh, I think.
Miko, me, kanyere, nukwe, I, I was a, I go, I, yeah, but.
Ah, go, I, yeah. Ah, yeah, oh, yeah, maybe.
Thank you, sister.
Thank you very much, thank you ma'am.
Thank you. Eh, thank you so much.
So, um. Well, and, uh, Adah here, I didn't, I don't know who is first, but please, uh, Adah here.
Adiaga, na, ah, ah, honorable, okay?
No, I know, I mean, sir, I didn't know you. I said, I don't know who, who is first.
Adiaga is the same thing as Adah. We know, Adah, you're a mouth, not like, Adah, you're a mouth.
No, 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 you can never be.
Yes, so, Aludoh, I love the name. It's nice to be with all of you this evening, right from the space. We had to switch over. Thank you so much for hosting us this evening. I don't even, I'm too early. I'm still waiting for our admin from Itayana. But I want to support whatever Itayana and people who, who, you know, welcome my APM with, with the five thousand AJ. I've already sent my receipt to Akara.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, thank you very much.
You, God bless you. Ah, my, 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 my. Hey, yo. Hey.
So, um, more than Nenaya, you have the mic please, you are welcome.
Nde wo, nde Aludoh mama no, nde wo no.
Nde wo.
Nde wo, do, um, oname G fifty AJ ma. Where in Aqua Do Yane Men O Bosin Keta. Just in the, nde wo, no, they send the. Eh, chere go do do, unge send the mazia para wa the receipt now, I will do it. Eh, mazio ke, unguanu just in the ke, didenaka na, who rehunu ne mena, the man, nde wo no.
Yes, thank you very much. How, how are you doing, madre? So, uh, bakota, bakota, um.
I'm your mother, oh, oh, oh.
I'm both before.
Uh, we appreciate how we hear the line. Uh, just pray that now you're black and when they send understanding. Uh, so that, uh, if I am not gonna know the, the easier. Yes, so with understanding, every of this thing will be easier and I want common enemy. Hmm, and that is just what we pray. Thank you very much, thank you very much, thank you very much, you are welcome.
Nde wo, thank.
Beautiful girl. Come on, beautiful girl.
Thank you.
I saw.
Yes, thank you. Yes, we are about calling in the APM. There is a reason why we choose this display. We just want to make our people angry. It is lovely to see our children, the young ones, perform this, put up this display in a foreign land. We should be angry over it because this is what they should be performing in our homeland, in Biafra land. Imagine the, imagine the economic boost such we be attracting through terrorism. We are missing it. We are missing it because this thing like Atalago, we know is faster universal display or dance across Biafra land. There's no region or area where you, where you don't get Atalago. And in this costume, to make it a cultural or carnival display across Biafra land alone will be an economic boost through terrorism. So we should be angry if people generally see such a display and know that this is why we are struggling or fighting to get Biafra so that all these things will be performed, including illegal, all those things they come outside to, perform outside, illegal, all those can of us. We will take this home and make it a cultural attraction to boost economy. So, thank you, Honorable APM is around. It is time to address Biafrans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable K. And thanks to people of Aludu. We salute the executive. Thank you, believe this is sister Tahoe meeting. This year, so people of Aludu, starting from the administration, you are really stepping up. Our leaders will really be appreciative of what people of Aludu, what they are doing, how they have remained resilient, strong, and proactive. Thank you.
Thank you, APM.
Just as usual, we always remember those before us. We appreciate their sacrifice. We salute them. And our leader, Mazinamdekan, we appreciate all he's doing. We salute him. Thank you. Our Prime Minister, who I have opportunity to speak to yesterday, he also spent his greeting. We appreciate all he's doing, being there for us, being strong. These two great leaders, they did not wake up one day and desire or pray to be where they are today. They are there for one reason. The reason is to free us from bondage. Just like Honorable, okay, you just stated earlier. The reason is for us as a people to know who we are, to be able to have children that we know where they're from, to be able to have children that will live life to its fullness. The video we just watched few minutes ago. These are Biafran children scattered all over the world. Some don't even speak Biafa language. Some don't even know where their parents from. Some of the parents actually want to visit Biafran, but they are scared. They are afraid. They don't know the fate of these children. If they go home with them, they don't know if these children will be kidnapped by the bandit, by the terrorists Nigeria. They don't know if these beautiful kids will be killed by the Nigerian terrorist state or by the Fulani husband. They don't know if these beautiful young Biafrans will be raped or murdered. That is why we are fighting. That is why we want to be free from bondage. A lot of us here living diaspora are scared to go home. Even on their way from the airport to their destination, if they see a car coming behind, they will be looking, just imagining the wish. The car behind are not kidnappers. It's heartbreaking that we find ourselves in this situation that we are today. But we have no choice. Rather, to fight, to keep fighting. Whether we are few or many, whether we are two, three, or four in this Zoom or watching, we'll keep fighting. No retreat, no surrender. We only have one hope. That is, either we live or we die. Either we live as freeborn or we live as slaves. Either we allow the terrorists to change our name, just like changing Ogechukunkere to Musa, or I fight to retain my God-given name. Our future is in our hand. Our freedom is in our hand. Freedom is not given. Have any of us heard that before? Is freedom given, my fellow citizen? I'm asking this question. Is freedom given?
No.
No, no.
No.
So, freedom is taken, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We are in the same page.
With a fight too.
And for that reason, we will fight to take our freedom. And do we think our freedom will be handed over to us in a plethora of goods? I don't think so. No way. We saw what happened in United States of America just few days ago. On a summit of how many, some few countries from Africa. What is that summit all about? It's all about negotiation of deal, trade, economy. How both country will benefit from each other. Nothing is free. America will not have anything to do with these five African country. If it is not, if they don't have any interest of gaining anything from that mutual friendship. It goes both ways. Their aim, agenda, objective is for them to profit, to gain from it. Likewise, if countries from Africa, they want to partner with the leader of the free world, maybe in exchange of security, one way or the other, wanting or the other. Nothing can be handed over to these five African country for free. And America, they can also not get it for free. Likewise, in our own cause. Our freedom, we can't get it for free. We need to fight for it. We need to fight ourselves out of this bondage. My people, we don't really know how, we don't really know what is really going on. These people hold us in a tight corner. If we don't fight our way out, Itorato will remain there forever. Because Biafrans are special breeds. We are special people. We have a lot to offer, a lot to offer. Any country all over the world, wherever you find a Biafra, they always a boost to that economy of that country, either by buying and selling, trade, engineers, doctors, professionals of all walks of life that make us special. We are not beggars. If you find a Biafra in United States of America, that Biafra will work very hard to be part of American society or system. That you're working hard, it grow the economy. Because the more you work, the more you pay tax. Fight, you owe my own, how much taxes I'm paying? That's what it is. That is how the system is designed. We are special people. We need to acknowledge that. And we don't want to take our specialness or our kindness turn it around to be our weakness. A lot of Biafrans all over the world have abandoned Biafran. Some look at it like uninhabited territory. Because of what? The Nigerian terrorist state, they have put fear in Biafran. They have made a lot of Biafrans don't even want to go home because of insecurity. So, my fellow citizens, for how long are we going to allow these terrorists to keep terrorizing us, putting fear, fear in us? One of the reason why the British Empire handed over to the North, especially the Fulanis, is because of terrorism. The Fulani, they terrorize the British people or the British government that scared them. And they decide to work together. Why our Biafran parents, grandfathers, welcome the British? Have a handshake, thinking they are dealing with normal people, not knowing that these people have come to make us dry, to take advantage of our kindness. We welcome them in our home, have lunch, dinner with them, thinking we are dealing with people that met well for us, not knowing that these people have come to know our terrain, to know our way of life, to know how they can conquer us. While we are there laughing, saying, look at this white man. Look at how your skin look like. I don't blame them. I blame us. And it's time that we learn from that. It's a big lesson for us not to let that again. Where Biafra is fully restored, that is when we fully regain our total sovereignty. We'll do business with the whole world, whether you are white, black, orange, apple, it doesn't matter. As long as you're a human being created by Chukwukeke Abiam, our God, we'll do business with you, no matter your skin color, no matter your race, no matter where you from. We'll welcome you, but not like before. This time is going to be Biafra first. This time is going to be the interest of Biafra people first. Not like before that our grandfathers put the interest of the foreigner first. It's still happening in that Zulu country today. They even prefer to treat foreigners better than the indigenous. That will not happen in Biafran. My fellow citizen, is it not time for us to go home? My fellow citizen, is it not time for Biafrans to introduce Biafran land to our children, our generation? To let them know there is a place called Biafran. If you don't, just like our children, we just watched the video a while ago. The next thing you see them, they will get married to some Chinese speaking. The next thing, they will come home to daddy and mommy with a Chinese man or woman speaking Chin-Chong-Kong-Chin-Chong. The next thing that will happen, your own language, the mother tongue will vanish, disappear. Because they have brainwash our brain that we always consider our own language, not even secondary language. We consider foreign language before our language. Next thing you will see your daughter speaking Spanish. Your son speaking Chinese instead of speaking our mother tongue language. It's hard time we do what is right. The world is waiting for us to wake up. We are sleepy. I don't blame the West. For those Africans or African country that always want to point finger on the West, blaming them how they do this to Africa, how they do that. I blame the Africans. I blame us. Why do we allow that to happen? If you allow a stranger or a foreigner come inside your house while you are preparing a beautiful, nice meal, and you allow this stranger to eat your meal and while you are hungry, you are really hungry, thirsty, you have to eat so you can live. You have to eat that food so you can survive. If not, you will be starved to death. And you allow this stranger just because of your kindness, you allow him finish the food. Who do you blame? And you go to bed hungry, you starving. Maybe from there, your starvation comes death. Would you blame the foreigner, the stranger, or you will blame yourself? That is what happened in the case of Africa. Stand up, get up. The West, let me tell you one secret about the West. They love competition. When you compete, you show them how tough and resilient you are, they will respect you. If you don't, it's your fault, they will ride on you. You will turn to their horse, they will sit upon you and they will ride you to their destination. The Ebro News. The West love competition. They love toughness. They might push you, push you when you tough. They might bully you, shake you to see if you will surrender, if you will give up. But if you don't, they will give you salute. As long as you stand your ground and do what is right, anyone that have come to bully you, anyone that have come to take your rightful place, take what belong to you, fight, resist. God, it's your right. Defend yourself. I hate to talk too much. I love action. The only language that will take you to your destination or that you can succeed from is language of toughness and action. If you just rant from morning to night without action, you're going nowhere. I will use United States of America as a case study. United States of America move with peace, true strength. Not strength, true peace. Peace, true strength. They use their strength to get what they want. If not, they will kick your ass. These terrorists that have come to overrun our land, my fellow citizen, if we don't show them strength, what do you think will happen? I'm asking a question. If we don't show them strength, what do you think will happen? They will overrun our land. If you like, bring your Bible. Read from Genesis to Revelation, prophesy from heaven to down earth without you taking action. If you like, let your pastor teach you tell you how to do fasting and prayer from morning to night before you get outside. If you don't take action to defend yourself, to defend your land, they will take over your land from you. When it happen, who will you blame? Are you not going to blame God? Are you not going to blame the Fulani husband or the terrorist people? What they did to you? They came to your house, they come, they do this, they kill you, they chase you from Biafran to Ambazonia. Story. That is exactly what happened when the West came to Africa trying to exploit whatever, everything exploitable. We allow them and they ride us like a horse. They feed us when we want to eat. They ride you to the stream where you want to drink water. Oh, God. So, for that reason, it's time for us to do what is right. It's time for us to let the world know that Biafran is ready to be among lead of all nation. It's time to let the world know that Biafran is ready to be among country that will keep peace, that will bring justice, equity. It's time to let the world know that Biafran we partake or we be part of country, that we will all fight terrorism together. We need to let the world know that who will be part of this global beautiful world created by Chukwukike Abiam to make this world a better place, to make this world livable again, to make this world beautiful again, to show the international community that we can live and let live. And we will as well. Let everyone that come to Biafra land. That they can come and Biafra land will be safe. That they can come to Biafra land and do business, we all have handshake together. But not to come to Biafra land to make us dry. How do we achieve this? We can achieve this by your support, my support, all our collective effort. We can achieve this common dream. Of Biafra being among. Country that will pioneer and champion freedom all over the world. Because we are good people. The world know it. You know it, I know it. And before we get there. If we are not free as free people. We can achieve this dream. My fellow citizen. If you be fighting, fighting for your liberation, for your freedom, for your recognition, fight like never before. No one will hand over your freedom to you. Not even our president, United States of America, not even Trump, not even his cabinet. Not even America will give you your freedom for free. You have to initiate it if you need their help. You have to fight. They want you to fight for what you believe. Here in United States of America seventeen seventy six. America fought Great Britain, which was one for that matter. They kicked the Brits' ass, kicked them out of America. They fought for their freedom. They know you can only fight for you to be free. At the time here in United States of America. A lot of tribes, race are not free. At the time here in United States of America. Women are not even free to vote. They are not even free. They don't have equal rights. These brave women fought for their rights. At the time here in United States of America. Black people are not free. They fought to be free. My fellow citizen, nothing wrong. For you to fight for your freedom. Nothing wrong. For you to be free. You must fight. Hey. If you don't, story, you won't be free. No one will give you freedom. Even God will not come from heaven. If God will jump from heaven or fly from heaven or come in spirit to free us. Why do you think he allow? His servants? To fight? For them to be free? People of all walks of life that believe in the Creator, Chukokike Abiam. He always support them. Where he know they are fighting. For their freedom. Where he know they are doing the right thing. You can fold your hands. And he will just come and free you. He support your effort. And for those that think we are playing, yesterday we did a recognition fundraising. We spent hours. Here we are today again. For you, I'm talking to you. For those that think we are joking, we are not. We are not joking. We are not playing. Those that are mocking us. Thinking we will never be free, thinking it's not going to be possible, it will shock you. That, that you think is not possible. With our resilience. With our consistency. And we believe. Our Creator, we assist us as well, knowing that we are fighting. He will support. He will remember us. We can only achieve that by your support. Just like I said yesterday, this journey is never gonna be easy. And Biafra is here. We are denied hour. It's getting tougher, tougher day by day. If it is not getting tougher the way it is now. That means we are not doing it right, because nothing come easy. When the black movement in United States of America, they went through hell, fighting for their survival. When the Israelite want to leave Egypt, they went through hell, fighting for their survival. First World War, a lot of countries went to hell, fighting for survival. Second World War, the same. Nothing come easy. My fellow Biafrans. If you believe in freedom. Do what is right. Fight for your freedom. Stop blaming, blaming, stop this blaming game. Today you blame the West, tomorrow you blame the Middle East Asia. It's their fault. They do you this, they do you that. You go do them the same that they did to you. If you think it's easy. It's because. We came short, we made a mistake. Because they took advantage of our kindness, but you don't blame them for that. Either you take advantage of them or they will take advantage of you. So you have to choose one. The best is better we meet at the middle. You don't cheat me, I don't cheat you. We have a fair handshake, fifty fifty, live and let live. But if you let them conquer you, take your resources, it's your fault. Instead of you letting them conquer you and take your resources. Why not negotiate? I have a good deal, good business. Fifty fifty. You go with what you have, I go with what I have. You both not benefit. It's time we wake up and do what is right. And please. All the genuine freedom fighters, I encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. Biafra is here. We just have to grab it. We just have to do the needful. By supporting your freedom, funding your recognition, funding your diplomatic war that I call it a diplomat war. Because when you meet these high ranking lawmakers. You preach, preach, preach. You said everything you want to say for them. To fall in line with you. If some of you don't know what is happening to Nigeria today. It's through the effort. Of our great leaders. And also through the effort of our lobby in Washington. In DC. The image of Nigeria in Washington DC is done and dusted. In DC don't consider Nigeria as a country. It's a failed state. Nigeria is a failed state, very corrupt, big one of that matter. Please, I want to encourage everyone. Don't let the destruction. From those that I don't know who they working for to affect you. What they are doing is to distract us. Instead of letting us focus on the ball, focus on what we give us our freedom. They are destroying each other. Distracting us. I woke up this morning, I saw a memo that was sent to me through text message, I didn't even open it. It's so laughable. Because this individual is already suspended. When you are suspended, are you still sending me a memo? Memo of what? You are suspended? So I never see we are a committee. In a government, we be higher in ranking than the cabinet or the government itself. I never see we are a committee. We run a government. It never happen. Groups that have been suspended. Or dissolve, or dismember. They still have the courage to write. They keep writing. Then we explain and explain and they will be tired of their explaining. This group just have to disease from using BRIGI brigging, because that's what will put them in problem. And it's fast coming. Please fellow Biafrans, don't be distracted. Do like never before. The video of our young daughters, children that was just played earlier. These children, they are in abroad. Over ninety percent of these kids don't even know they are. Their parents' village or home. We don't want to die in exile or remain in exile forever. For those that are dual citizens, they have the right. To still be in the country of their domicile. While they still have the right to be proud of Biafra, where they originally from. Biafra land must be peaceful and protected. We can only do that by funding it. If you used to do one a year before, please, I encourage you to do two. The journey is getting tougher day by day. And the Nigerian terrorist country, they have a lot of moles that they plant in our midst. These people are not sleeping. They doing everything they can do to distract us. Please, I'm gonna plead with Honorable Minister of Information. After today. Those that are no longer with us, please, even in the airspace, let's forget about it. They are not relevant. The more we talk about them, the more they distract us more. Let's focus on what is happening in Biafra land. Let's tell the world. How the Nigerians have colluded with the British Empire, with the Fulani, Hesmen. Let's tell the world how Nigeria. Have come with over eight different group of terrorists to overrun our land, Islamizers, killers, chasers. Let's bring the atrocity of this Nigerian terrorist and all the terrorists they work with that they have colluded with. That is what we'll be presenting to the world. Let's forget about this nonentity group of educated fools. That mean nothing. That with their education, they can't even help us. Let's forget about it. Please, I'm begging the media team to do the needful. We are glad we have Honorable Minister of Information. That is smart, know what he's doing. Bless you and your team. Let's set our eyes on the ball, on the goal. These fallen angels are here to distract us. We only have one brigging. And if these fallen angels still keep patrolling, parading themselves. They are brigging, brigging, brigging. Brigging, we come and deal with them. It's a promise. They don't have the right to use brigging. They don't have the power. They're not in the foundation of brig. They're not here when brigging started and how it starts. Just as I promised. I will make sure I hold this brigging key very tight and this brigging will bring USB. This brigging will lead us to our final destination. Before I start to tighten. To lock the door of brigging so that these infiltrators. Will not go around my back or the prime minister back to do damage. I use lock and key, double key, to lock it properly. And spell and remove those that are removable to the trash can. If not, they will destroy brigging. That will never happen. Brigging must bring USB, mark my word. Whoever are there parading themselves as brigging, if they don't have the power to do that. Wait, brigging is coming, will visit you. That is a promise. Fellow Biafrans, please, we don't want to bring shame to ourselves. We want to fight with honor. That is why I encourage everyone, fund your freedom, fund your recognition. Our land is breeding. The Nigerian terrorists are in our land, killing us every day, but we are defending our land. We need to do more. And today that I'm in the de facto state of Biafra, Aludum. Aludum people, please. Bring your money to fund your freedom. Do everything you can to protect Aludum, to protect Biafra land. We are not liberating America. We are not liberating Finland. We are not liberating Germany or Canada. We are liberating Biafra land and Aludum is in Biafra land. That land must be peaceful. We must liberate Biafra, we must liberate Aludum. We can do that with your money. Though that are just bringing ten a Jema, twenty a Jema, and if you have more than that, bring it. So that you will get, receive more blessing from the land, because the land will never forget you. Thank you, fellow citizens. Thanks to all the cabinet, brigging cabinet, all the administrative of Aludum. Please, I want all of us to remain strong. Especially Honorable Minister of Information, we can't do anything without you. You're a man of intelligence. Please, take this word seriously. For almost three weeks, these poor have distracted us enough. And we also want to send a message to those that are working with chicken. The double agent, the saboteur disease. Stop funding that man because he will use that money to work with the terrorists to kill our people. Please, take this seriously. Thank you all from here. I'm still here, I'm still probably gonna come back, have one or two words. With my fellow citizens. I know whenever I start speaking, I get stopped, because I love talking to Biafrans. Please, fund your freedom. Fund your freedom. Your freedom will not be handed over to you in a platter of gold. And if we are here waiting for Russia, America, Ukraine, or wherever. And if we are here waiting for Russia, America, Ukraine, or whatever, they not coming, I'm just going to let you know. America will recognize us. They will support us when we start fighting harder. When they hear how much how we are kicking the ass of the Nigerian terrorists. They are watching. That is why Nigeria is finding it difficult. During the inauguration of the President of the Free War, J. Donald Trump, we are invited. But Nigeria is not invited. What does that tell you? Thank you all from here. Please, support and fund your freedom. And also, I encourage everyone to put our leader Mazin Namdi County in prayer and our Prime Minister Mazzi Simon Egbon. He remains strong, waiting for the verdict. Very soon we believe he will join us. Thank you, Deewon.
Thank you, APM, you are highly unwelcome. Thank you for that beautiful speech and reminder to all Biafrans. Aludu say once again, thank you very much. And one of your key words, please, let's take this into reckoning. Because even in the scripture says that heaven have those who have themselves. So, as we're here today, there is nobody is going to come to help us when we fold our arms and expect the miracle to fall from manna. It was then that a manna used to fall, it doesn't fall again. Anything you don't do, you don't get the result. So for those out there also expecting that maybe we leave America to go to China or to go to Russia, how will they come to help you when you are sleeping? It doesn't work. And like APM rightly said, they must, they want to see you first in action, serious. For that thing you are beginning, no country will send their military, their military, their men. Everybody meant to come to Biafra land and fight for us. This is what we have to do for ourselves. And until that is done, don't expect anybody to come and free us. Thank you very much, sir. That is a, that is a prime word and we recognize that. So it would be good if we all take this into a notice and a reckoning. Let it be in our, in our head all the time. Before we expect something to happen from others for us, we must put an effort to make that happen. So that that person that we are going to call for help, we see that, yeah, we have done enough. That is how it goes. So, thank you, sir. And I'll call on Wadachi, please, come with your song so that we continue with the APM support and for the color note. Okay, Honorable Love, do you want to support him directly before Wadachi come to with the...
Yes, so, yes, so, among everything APM said, that reminder, our people always want to stay underneath their bed and yell at somebody across the street to come and rescue them. Russia has been fighting with Ukraine. I don't see Biafrans going to help them. Okay, so Biafrans have no moral grounds to yell at Russia to come and help them or any other person for that matter. So, the earlier we get it, that it is our problem and we have to solve it. Then if somebody see what we are doing and think we need help, they can come and give us help. They don't give you help before you begin to try, that's backwards. So, with twenty Ajema, I'm supporting what APM just said. So, Onyamba kego, desu lumea, forty Ajema. Okay, that's off now.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Honorable Love. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maz, okay, sorry, my honorable says here, so I am here by handing over to him so that he will continue for where I stopped.
Okay, okay.
Is that brother there, can I co-host him?
Yes, I think he's here.
But how are you there?
I haven't seen him, maybe he would, he's not here now.
Who, who do you need, who do you need co-host?
Okay, brigging, he say with his brigging, are you?
Use brigging, it's enter, brigging, it's enter.
Okay, brigging. All right. Okay, it's done.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you are welcome.
Okay, maybe he's still offloading, offloading bread and the rest of, the rest of it. Yes, and Namak, I saw our sister hand before you, watch Kubetis say put down. Okay, go on, go on, your support before, before Lady Chi. Lady Chi, the music done there already and the song.
Yes, Honorable.
Go on, go on, please.
Hello, hello, can anybody hear me?
Yes, you can hear me.
Yes, yes, my people, I greet everybody. I came in, I just came in late in Abuja, I'm trying to settle down in a hotel. Can we continue? But I'm listening over everything. I thank everybody for coming and I thank everybody. Let me settle in and then I will participate fully. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, Namak, he broke it down then. Namak is not available. So, Wadachi, sorry, okay, sorry, okay, Wadachi just a cool down. Please, make me collect this, conduct this, is asking for money, maybe we collect it. And Namak is not available, Wada, Wada, watch, okay, go on, you raise your hand before. Hello, can you hear me?
I cannot mute myself now, I was muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Namak said to unmute him, please.
Okay. I bet he is a co-host, what happened?
Okay, I was muted though. I was muted.
Did you, did you lose your co-host?
Yes, I went in my network, now work, I'm fighting with network.
Okay, okay, you don't have co-host, okay, okay, good.
I'm using two phone. Okay, sorry for the delay. Anyway, an update from Canada. Wada Yunis, during the US town hall meeting, she placed thirty thousand Aj. Today she's supporting Aludu's, she has sent the money to me now. She supported Aludu with twenty thousand Aj. Ten thousand Aj for APM's speech. Five thousand Aj for Mazie Omega. Five thousand Aj for Wada Igoma, which is making a total of seventy thousand Aj.
Including the US, including the US.
Remove the US, remove the US, but it is in Aj, they're going the same path. It's from, it's Aj, it's not Ajema.
So, we record forty, we record forty thousand now against today, then the thirty, the thirty-four US, is it?
Yes, thirty-four US.
Okay, and then the four.
Thirty-four, thirty-four US.
So, we just record.
Yeah, now also, everything now, she give now is seventy thousand Aj, Aj, Aj. Please, you have to help me to record, to record our event, because most of the times I'll be kicked out. But that's why I'm using two phone, by the time I come back, I'm using a phone and a laptop.
I think, I think we will, we will live with Wada Betty after, since she is also taking.
Also, I can also get it on YouTube, it's recorded. It's been streamed live, yes.
Okay, thank you. You are done, Namak.
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
Yes, it's noted, okay, Wachukwu is no longer, okay, go on.
I'm done.
Yeah, I know, I mean, Wachukwu, I think I asked that she be made a co-host before, so it doesn't... Honorable, can you still co-host Wachukwu?
Okay, I'm, I'm on there for muted me now, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't know why it caught me up. Did you hear what I said earlier?
No.
Oh, oh my goodness, okay, I was appreciating our APM for standing in the group gap for our PM. We thank you, APM, we appreciate you, we thank you for the good job, the great job you're doing. Our PM is really proud of you and we are proud of you as well. And I know Onyamdu as well is very proud of you, we are all proud of you. Thank you very much and thank you for that wonderful speech, for that wonderful speech. Now handy, umu imeni, I will support with fifty thousand, which is now total of seventy. They won't, China, the one.
Thank you, madam, it's now over fifty thousand Aj. Ajema.
Aj. Yes, plus, and they are twenty, so it makes it, yeah, total of seventy for today.
Yeah, we're, we're here.
Thank you, thank you. Umu imeni, na, umu imeni, debo. Umu imeni, debo, umu imeni, debo.
So, Honorable, please, make we collect this, this thing now fast forward, so that you take your time. Because we have Mazze, Honorable Victor, go on, please.
Hello, my friend.
One million.
Hello.
Yeah, hello, go on.
Can you hear me?
That one is not for us, we have to take the money.
Can you hear me, my friend?
Okay, continue, continue.
Okay, yeah, Victor, then continue.
Okay. Victor, go ahead.
Am I coming out now?
Yes, you can hear you.
Da Aludu, da Aludu.
Da Aludu, one noble.
Yes, they can, they can, na, onwe rofuinhe, ndi, ndidi, Bia, people, they were, they come just, na, come well, I think. Na, Aludu, na, the Biafran, eh, nide, onwe rofuinhem, chori, kude, kamse, na, 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 su, deke, ka, onyo, bu, na, na. Eh, you see, building a house is different when you are building a company or you are building a school. So, as it stands now, when you are building a house, you know, eh, that house that you are building might benefit a limited number of people. But in this case, we are building a, we have, but when you are building a company or you are building a school, you have it in mind that that company, it will be able to benefit not just you, not just your family, not just you, but it will be able to benefit even external bodies and even more, more, larger numbers of nation and even generations to come. So, and I want us to see it at this stage. You know, that house that you are building or that company are building, you know, nobody will, will support you at the initial stage, nobody will acknowledge you at the initial stage. Not until that company, that company is being built and launched, you know, and it's been opened and is now yet to employ, you know, others, you know, or other benefits, you know, to come and walk in there. That is when other people will now recognize and start acknowledging you, acknowledging that company, acknowledging that, that foundation, what you have made. So I want us to start to see it in this hour, we are building a country, we are fighting for our freedom. Nobody will come to our rescue, nobody will help us, nobody will recognize us now. Not until we build this, this country, not until we be, not until we fight and we, we, we set a standard that we attract nation, that we attract people, that we attract others to come and say, yes, oh, there is something going on here, what is going on here? Is there any way we can support, is there any way we can come in, is there anything we can do? So I just want us to see it in that way, because we are still building. So it is here and we are getting to the point whereby we will begin to attract, you know, international and those recognition that we seek and we are looking for. Please, Biafran, let us continue to support, let us continue to contribute. I want to use this opportunity to encourage all my Abo, young youth, vibrant youth all over the world. Wherever you are, whether you are in the homeland, don't say because you are in the homeland that there is nothing you can do, or maybe the money you are going to contribute is too small. Those of us in other African countries, don't say because you are in an African country that, that whatever you are contributing is too small or you are ashamed of. No, we should all come together and do this, in the area, the better for us. Remember, lives are our property, our brothers, our young sisters, our siblings, all, all of them, their lives are at stake. The vampires, the evil terrorists, they are there, you know, making sure that they are making life thing uncomfortable for us, making us to remain wherever we are. Please, I will not, I will not exercise much on this, I believe that the world say no for the wise. Thank you very much, the acting Prime Minister and the Biafran government exile. We will continue to stand by you and we will be standing by the charter, which is our foundation and we continue to hold this so dearly to our heart. And I encourage each and every one of us to continue to go and study and begin to, you know, enlighten yourself more about that charter so that you will not, you will not fall apart whenever any breeze come across. Thank you very much, without wasting much, I'm going to support Aludu.
Yo, how are you doing today?
Very much. Kika, Biam, bless each and every one of us, thank you.
Deewon, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. How much, we didn't, we didn't get it, we didn't hear the reason, there was obstruction in between this.
No, so we didn't hear you well.
Uh, no, so I think he's done.
One million.
Okay, okay, I was, I was muted, I, I, I'm donating, I'm supporting this town hall meeting with fifty Ajema.
About fifty.
Wow, wow, wow. Thank you, thank you, the support for APM's speech, thank you very much.
Come on, please, come in tomorrow.
So, okay, Wada Ngiru.
Okay, thank you so much, Honorable Keo, all right. I want to thank our honorable APM His Excellency, yes. My thanking this, in this Aludu gathering, yes, APM, we have utmost gratitude to you, yeah, for sustaining this, our Biafran Public Government Exile since this, that woman struck in December of twenty twenty-four. We thank you so much for your endurance, you and Mazze Soni Marawa. We thank both of you so much. So, for your beautiful speech, your encouraging speech as usual, we know we always look forward to your speech. Yes, please, I'm supporting your speech with thirty Ajema in addition to my previous seventy. Minister Betty, be filing it on, please, yeah.
Yes. It's now round three.
So, out the other hundred.
Yeah.
Wow, thank you very much.
God bless you, God bless you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
So, we move faster to Google Pixel before Ezepina Biafra. So, Google Pixel, unmute yourself.
Maz, okay, my hand is up, I'm on.
Maz, okay, my hand is up. I'm on the fly. I don't know what happened next, but I've been raising my hand up.
Okay, sorry, then I will take you then. Okay, okay, go on. Please, I give you a word, uh, uh, a minute, please.
Okay, should I go on?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, I want to appreciate the A P M for one thousand. I want to appreciate eh A P M for his effort, for his diligence, for his doggedness, for his ability to stand people that want to make him a puppet. For that single reason, if my support for him had been ninety percent, I am now making it one hundred and ninety percent. Solidly behind him and will advise him not to shake, remain resolute. The end will justify the means. Um, I have, I keep telling people, I may not be right in there to know exactly what the crux of the mother is, but whatever happens, I gather the facts, I apply corporate and governance in government and I make my decision. I want to say this so that if there are people still within listening and having agitation in their mind on how to want to force a head of state to add, add, to to take advice, it is wrong. It is not done. Whatever you are within a government, you are subservient or you are subject to the whims and caprices of the head of state. Like we have been told separately, we are in a quasi military arrangement. And the issue is if you know you that are the soldier at arms and you know that I am not the one that takes the responsibility for the man who gives the order, not the man who pulled the trigger, not the man who took the shots, but the man who gave the order. So if the man who gave the order refused to accept your advice, it is his right in government. You have no right whatsoever to act otherwise and act in a manner that could be considered insurgency or mutiny within a government. So let it be clear to all of us that once you have supported a government and there is a head of government, his decision is final. Your opinion can only come as advice. You cannot enforce. It is an aberration for a committee to say they suspend the head of government. It is not acceptable. We abhor it and we reject it. It's not an issue. We will apply emotions. This, 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 this emotion does not count. Emotion does not count here. What counts is fact. You advise him and he rejects it. Abasandja will tell you on appointment, your duty is to advise me. My duty is to accept or reject, not when I reject. You say, Abasandja did this, and that's the proper thing to do. So, we are solidly from Aludho, we solidly, we unfortunately lost one of us today who allowed emotion to be clouded, his sense of reasoning. And we we have bid him farewell and we have urged him to follow his mind like he said he has been following his mind right from Odibewu Jukwawa father and I asked him farewell. In the end, we are all heading to Abuja, whether you come through Lokuja, whether you come through eh Badaw, whether you, anywhere you come through.
Where I come through, okay, eh?
Eh, anywhere you come through, we will meet in Abuja. On that note, let it be known that any attempt to force the A P M to accept an ad- advice will be considered mutiny by the people in government. So on that note, I raise my advice and I want to use the sum of ten thousand naira now to pick my own color notes. I regret my inability to be available and make my speech at the appropriate time against my deputy eh did the needful. And I will use additional five thousand naira.
Exact, exact.
I will use five thousand AJ.
I say this, this Abuja you go, you get a C B.
I am on the road. As I'm talking to you, I am moving from one hotel or the other to find a suitable place to stay. Um, so please, uh, forget my infractions, forgive my infractions. Uh, so I make it a total of fifteen thousand AJ uh to for five thousand for A P M's speech and there's ten thousand for my color notes. Thank you very much, everybody. Um, in the end, God will help us and the end will justify our meat. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
God bless you, God bless you.
Yes, thank you.
And God bless you.
So, Ezepina Biafra. There were. Ezepina Biafra, you got on the mic?
Uh, nde kayo na no onai.
Ka wo, ka wo, ka wo Ezepina Biafra.
Nde wono yagazeh, yamanani ma. Eh, my honorable, my honorable A P M Makele Mgen, you won't kick a G sheke. Eh, because not to forget, AJ mo five thousand AJ na kado eh nda Aludo state. And the payment has been made through eh over the state default on there one.
God bless you, God bless you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Ezepina Biafra, we appreciate you. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. Uh, I will give the mic to honorable America.
Honorable Keo?
Yes.
There is donation from eh Item Ibera County, twenty five thousand AJ. I don't know whether it has been announced already.
Uh, no.
Okay, Item Ibera County, twenty five thousand AJ. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, my, for my job minister.
Honorable America, uh, your mic, please. Uh, you see, uh, he done, okay, there's the mute him. Okay, you are muted.
Yes.
So.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I I have been having, I've been having internet connection issues since yesterday. And I'll make it quick. I'll, I'm sorry I came in late, but I was here early uh to gain permission because I was on the road. But anyway, um, greetings, uh, biyafrans, greetings, uh, uh, and nda Aludo. And uh, I salute my A P M, the man of the hour. And uh, I also uh salute uh our uh leader, Mazze Namdekano and my Prime Minister, uh, Mazze uh Simonakba. And I am grateful that there are some of us, or many of us, who are still believing in our cause. And like I said, I'll make it quick because my internet is not stable. So, uh, on behalf of uh 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 Bridgie, uh, USA North and South and Omunna County, uh, we will pick the color not with a hundred AJ ma. And uh, and uh, we also uh uh support our A P M and the wonderful speech that he made with another hundred AJ ma. And that will bring us to two hundred AJ ma. And I will forward the receipt uh in about two days. That's on Wednesday. Thank you, thank you. Our European, our rep, God bless you. We appreciate you, sir. There were. Thank you. Sorry, I have a little update. Wada Unis is in a aboro yabo that he would attack us. So we should say, anti Betty, please, just give her a song.
For Sister Unis and for our honorable North and South Red.
Yeah.
God bless you. Yes, yes.
All right.
We move. So, uh, and uh, sorry, no, I lost the track because I was on call. So I don't know how the the format is, who is first and who is uh who should speak next.
Uh.
Don't speak one person. Rage and Fury.
Look at freedom in the front.
Okay, so, okay, Rage and Fury, then, uh, go on.
It's raining.
Please check whether you're muted.
Yeah, I've muted him.
Okay. Make them food is still moods, still, still on muted.
Uh, okay, okay, go on, Rage and Fury. Now unmute yourself, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. You muted me before, actually.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, good evening to you, great biyafrans. Greetings to you, our lovely Kikuku Kiri. My goodness, our acting Prime Minister, Prime Minister Simonakba. Nadi, uh, wonye duma Zinandi Kano, His Excellency. Greetings to the entire Biafra Defense Forces and their leaders and every personnel and every financial donor. You are the hero. You are the heroine. Um, on behalf of Sorogo Anisoko State of Biafra today, I will be picking the color with a sum of eh one thousand AJ. So everything that I've bought so far is total the war eh four thousand naira, that is four thousand AJ now. And I know the right source to remit it, which I'm going to do from after now. And based on tradition, I want to use our language also, we will be supposed to make a short prayer over this polar that I pick because eh in my place, we pick a polar, we take a prayer on it. So can I go ahead and just do a short prayer?
Yeah.
No, I, I, okay, thank you very much. Eh, ogayne sokoo, e doisokoo. Esakini ma eno, ewu fre no, ano mi yuru wa ve dinene. Eh, wena na nomere hona, ye yoyo eh biyafra. Ye yu swazo, swaze mama, temeta temesa. Swaze yama, eske ma inima, swazo e go my bobi. Onu me lena wena na, mefere hona, owo bobi na tuo marokuma, owo ma yuleli. Owo bobi na tunyo maroko, ome biyafra. Omo jono, owo nyeh, owo si pre inze. Onu me leno, yo tunyo ma, yo dele laire. Eh leno, oto maji inevo ma jono, is eh weliye dema, ne weliye gare mo ma, ne weliye gare go ma wewa. Na bejeje, zukelati biziziyo, ufo manana ma be honroken onu. Me leno, owo bo mo sofi amajira bobi nanya. Abeniye wore wobo eh, dasporo wobo abroad narona onu. Ya nevo ma e wore, ya wavo ma e wore. Eh, malé, neri a bobi na ta eh, ri bo na na wana na. Obere na bojana na wana o o ono na. No mari wono mama, bo ma wo mane biyafazu. Unyeh no vo maremle, ne mama, ma ye asedjo, e woy eh biyafana asedjo, wiso kuasedja, wibo. Asedja wuroba, asedja wigo domi godo, asedika, asedjo. Ye anoma asedji jo, asedji shakiri, asedji gala i gedé, asedjo i doma, asedja akwaibo, asedjo itana, asedjo.
There is no more doing any fundraising until A P M come out, P M come out. So how do you mean? Said he don't know who to, who to play, put his money again that he's tired. Because of what is happening. Many divisions and many more that there another division is not coming out again. I said, okay, are you going to now wait and then the land of Biafra will be bleeding until when P M come out? That you don't need to, you, you have eyes, our people is mind and more catch on. We know the truth, you follow the truth. That this is where I am and this is where I know that, I believe that if I put my money, it will be channel for what we are seeking for. I took almost thirty minutes to convince this young man. But you keep on telling me about Nguzo Rabes and many more. So our people are, are divided. So but it is better we put them behind and move forward because there is nothing, there's nothing we can do now to convince them their mind had been twisted. And many of them choose to allow their mind to be twisted because if you want to know the truth, you will know the truth. You want to follow the truth, you will follow the truth. So, and for that, I don't want to talk more on this issue as well, but I so much love that speech when he said, let's put them behind and then focus on Biafra. But each anytime we are talking about them, it will become a distraction to us. So I am supporting that speech with five thousand AJ. And also I am giving my own support to Aludho with ten thousand AJ. So and the receipt has also be forwarded to my admin. God bless you all.
Thank you, Mazembe Roma.
Tell something, is this ten thousand or twenty-five?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I can, I can delay.
Go on now, we have a free mic.
Okay. Eh, eh, my honorable A P M. I've not been able to address this issue. But I want to use advice in the Bible where Jesus said, occupied he had come. About he not came, he not he come.
Yes.
No moving, no shaking. Thank you so much. Mother Yunis, you know, any twenty thousand AJ for a wonderful speech made by mother, what sister, what you cook. So you are the one that twenty thousand AJ making it total of sixty thousand AJ.
Ah, okay.
I look for Nudo today.
Okay.
Because.
God bless you, Mother Yunis, God bless you. Thank you very much.
Great, 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 good people of Biafra. You know, our leader Mazinamdekanu said, only the truth and the honesty, our freedom. When you are, you find out the truth and you are not honest to yourself, which means you have never start. You have to be honest to yourself before you embrace the truth. You saw the truth and you don't want to embrace the honesty in it, which means you never start. So, I welcome our great honorable excellency, acting prime minister, Ogetukunkere, to Aludu State. I am from Aludu State and I am giving you assurance that what happened during the Emeka, Odmebo Jukun, that they betrayed this our freedom. Because it's happened that one of his brother, they called Mojejku, Odmebo Jukun gave him the take to go to England to withdraw all their father's money, all his father's money, and go to a country to purchase ammunition. Mojejku went to England, used the money, bought so many properties. When he, he pick all his family siblings and went to England and block the communication with Odmebo Jukun that made the zoo to make blockage to our families that caused machoko in our land. And in this presence of this our struggle to become a free Soviet, the same from Odmebo State, Kusuhala, from Ngosorabeze, Adabya Ranja. The second one is from the same Odmebo, Mazemamado and the Ruben Nadi. I'm telling you today that the generation of this present freedom fighters have broken the carriage of those lunatic. It can never work. We have risen up, the Odmebo State has risen up to nail them where they belong to. They can never, ever again set us back in this our journey to freedom. Because, because freedom is all we want. When you have a freedom to your state, to your country, in fact, you will love what is called freedom. Freedom of speech, everything about freedom. And all what belongs to freedom, you have it. You earn government, government sees the poor, government put you in a way that you will get money, you will work. So, what we are doing now today is to set the record straight that it's not all, all Odmebo States indigenous supporting the new generation of the Odmebo States. We stand for truth and we stand for honesty. So, for that reason, I am encouraging Aludu people to stand up no matter what happen, no matter whom you are looking up to, that the person fall away, don't mind the person because God has been removing the shaft from the weeds, which our leader, Oyendu Mazinamdekanu said it say, they are coming. He is not lamenting, but he's telling the people that we are born from their mother's womb to restore the kingdom of heaven on earth, which is Biafra, to remain resilient, to remain strong because we have many enemies. We have islands of enemies, both within and external. So, am I encouraging people? If such a thing happen, don't be weak, don't be weak. It is one of those things that we'll see in a freedom. If you look at the countries that have their freedom, just look at, let's say, in South Africa. How many years Nelson Mandela stood up? Twenty-seven good years, he stand for truth. The wife is against her, the son was against her, only the daughter stands firm. Only the daughter stand firm. In terms of America, how many American citizens stand to get freedom from Britain? Only seventeen. Take, go to Gogo, Gogo, eh, government in exile. Look at, eh, look at Singapore. The way Singapore stood and fought for their freedom. My dear brothers, if you really know that you love freedom, stand for the truth and be honest to yourself because with these two key, God will answer our prayer.
Yes.
God almighty will answer our prayer. And I want to make an announcement from the Odmebo State. We have initiated the prayer point because what we need now is not only a Gemma, really, a Gemma will work, but we still need backup with prayer. We have three religions in our Biafran destiny. Traditional religion, Christian religion, Jewish religion. Please, my brethren, if you know that you're a prayer warrior and you know how to talk to God by yourself, if you belong to any of these three religion, please find your way. We have circulated the link. It is from initiation from Odmebo State. And we want to make it viral so that those that believe that they shake hand with God, let them go to the God and talk to God what we need. Those that believe that our ancestors answered prayer through our ancestor, God answered us. Let your people belong to that ancestral, that's what traditional worshipper. Please, it is very, very important. Then the Jewish people, you know the tradition is similar with traditional worshipper. You are free. We need you people now because what we are facing now is many arrests, many enemies. And without a Gemma and prayer, how are we going to achieve it? We have to cry to our almighty God, Chukwokika Biama, the God of universe, the God that made us to remain alive today. It is not today that the Greeks want to enlit us, the God says no. Our Mazinamdekanu says, Biafran land is the kingdom of heaven that gods want to come and stay with us. If you really believe that, please buckle up your shirts, buckle up your trouser, but say that, sell your properties, sell your coats, sell whatever you have and buy armor. And that armor is weapon. That weapon is goes with a Gemma because you cannot, you cannot buy that weapon, you don't know where to keep it, but with your Gemma, that weapon will be, that armoury will be sustained and it will be bring to our eh, eh, angels. I pray to our angels to stand resilient. The God of our land, the God of Biafra, the God of universe is with you people. No weapon, passion against them shall prosper. No matter how the enemy try, no matter how they collide with some of our angels that love money, that love money, no matter how, even if they are only fight, God will raise the those that died in Biafran war, even before the Biafran war, God will raise them to make them fight. I remember one time, one time ago, many years ago, I was in train travelling to one city to another. I met an eh, 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 a white man in a train. When we, when I was discussing with one of my colleagues in a train about Biafra, you know what that man said? He said, are you from Biafran land? I said yes. This is the testimony I am giving today. You know what that man said? He said, we could have won the war, but we did not embrace our God. He said, we did not embrace our God. Even if the zoo kills all of us, our God will raise all those dead bodies with their missionary and they will be invisible, killing our enemy. So, I am telling you people today, let us embrace our God with truth and honesty. We know all of us are sinners, that God want us. Talk to God, ask him for forgiveness so that if you embark on this prayer, God will listen to us and God will raise people that we don't know. God will raise foreigner, God will raise foreigner to raise money for us. I am telling you today, God will raise an animal that doesn't want any eh, collateral. God will raise that animal. So, please, my brethrens, try to enter that, our three religion. We have, we have adopted Christian religion, traditional religion and Jewish religion. Please, anyone that you believe, don't castigate others, other wars, no matter how. Don't it in our Ebo leader, Oyendu said that we should stop calling Jesus Christ. He said Yahweh, Yeshua. He still believe in that name that he came to save us because the Jews, the zeus, the Greek, the Roman Empire, that was what they changed. If we can embrace it, let us see how this struggle will go. I come in peace. With all this speech I made and I welcome our Ebo acting prime minister. He is doing a lot to us. Without him, in fact, we are gone. I don't have much. I welcome him with two thousand AJ, then I'm supporting Aludo with two thousand AJ, in total of four thousand AJ. I am Mada Angoleka. And I told the people that, that backbone, Odmebo States have broken it, it can never go anywhere. Whoever that rose up again in Odmebo State will see his self in a shallow place. That person will take land and make cover because we can never, we can never be in this mess anymore. Those that sabotage our struggle starting from Odmebo Jukun, it can never happen again in Odmebo State or in any old Anambra state, it can never. Look at what Soludo was saying in America. Look at what he's saying in America. That is no more fooling, that is tormenting us.
It's unbelievable.
That one has gone and gone forever. The land of the script, the land of the universe, the land of the Biafra will make up eh, Soludo not to have any peace in his life. All his family will perish. Look at what his son was doing in London. Is it the life? Is it the life? So, we have to buckle our trouser and our shirts and our skirts because the war has begun. We have crossed the Rubicon. Nobody will set us back again. I come in peace. Thank you.
My man, there was.
Thank you.
Bless you. There was, there was an American. Please, I want all of us to do, eh, help me with Surumkatia for a minute. I'm finding that some people, it's supposed to be, the fear of God is supposed to be the beginning of wisdom for some people. Right? Rather, they turn it around to be the fear. It's the beginning of wisdom for them. They are crying. Mazemamado, this old buffoon is crying. He's crying because he's no longer part of Briggy organization. And this man live in Switzerland. How many times have you been in phone raising, you hear people calling from Switzerland?
Zero.
He cannot even bring one person with him. Very evil, self-centered, jealous envy man.
Evil man.
He is crying about resident agent to a new resident agent. If I'm not the resident agent in Maryland, will it be you? Mazemam, will you come from eh, Switzerland to be? I'm here, I'm waiting. Our leader Ojuku. Our leader Ojuku.
Mute somebody.
Eh, eh, please, eh, eh, I will.
Our leader, Ojuku, God gave him the wisdom here. Our leader Philip Ephiom, to hold his struggle strong. That's why we see here. And our leader Mazinamdekanu, he also received that gift to hold his struggle strong. Our prime minister, God gave him the new dimension way to catapult us to where we are today. And the same Chukwokika Biama said, who shall go for us? And I Mazyo Getukun say, yeah, I'm go, I'm gonna go. He said, okay, go. And he said, oh, Briggy strong, we be R O G I. They are crying because they are no longer in the history and article of Briggy. I don't wanna read this letter here to validate them, but it's also shameful that these people are crying. So, all this wire that they find themselves there, they don't even appreciate it or even happy. I thank God that they are no longer part of the organization. If not, they will destroy everything. Since a Mamadou can collude with a spy, a saboteur, a double agent who work for Ngosiorabeze, how will this man collude with who work with Ngosiorabeze? So, they are all, they are all colluded. Now, actually, I was just reading this letter. I can see how he was crying, crying, so painful. I know wherever he is, he will be pain in his path. A Mamadou, eh, a new mamling, they are panting, keep crying. And before this letter, dated on the 12th, we already suspended him.
Mm-hmm.
He don't even have the power anymore. And the address, seven two zero zero, they have to stop using it. He don't know how we come about this. He never been here, he don't know anything here. So, seven two zero zero, A Mamadou, stop using it. Abunki, you are not part of Briggy. Stop using our beautiful head office. You can go and use Ngosi own, the one that they have refused, re- removed the flag. A Mamadou, you are the Chioma, get a wig in the area. You can go and join eh, all of you can go and join Ngosi. Go and share the office in, in wherever, wherever she have. It's a shameful thing that we have professionals, we have educated fools, that they just wanna disgrace themselves. I promise after today, I'm not gonna talk about these irrelevant people. They are like kids. To me, they don't reason, some of them reason from their anus. It's so, it's so, it's so bad that they find themselves where they are. Till now, they don't still know how government run. They don't know how government work. I don't see how a committee would be so powerful to remove an acting prime minister, a committee led by a man who lie too much, very biased, envy, jealous man. Epuguna Tikula, you are not coming back, you are Ruben Nadi. Thank God that the key, I typed in it more, Briggy, again with the right USB. And if you mess with Briggy, Briggy, eh, go and ask Ngosi. A Mamadou, you and Ndio Chugi, both eh, comma. Lately, I have not heard from Bryce, no comment. This evil man will instigate and disappear. Nechekun, I have few no he done, none of you should mess with Briggy. B R O G I, G I answer. Our God have given me assignment to hold the key very tight. Lose enough, you people will destroy and it will not happen. Abunankawa, thank you.
Thank you, APN. If we update eh, our brother Albat from US, he's been struggling with eh, eh, to enter. He's having eh, eh, net to order, eh, he's not having eh, eh, mic. So, he is supporting a APN speech with a thirty, a Gemma. So, I think, Parachini, I think you know, you know him?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
God bless you.
Yes, so, eh, Regian Thuri, so you have the mic, please.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, sir. Actually, I just want to eh, make a little speech. Eh, eh, thank you so much, eh, honorable acting prime minister, your excellency. You are the best, or you are one of the best gifts that God has given Biafran people. Honestly, I strongly believe if you had been here earlier, a lot of our young men and women, old fathers and mothers that were keyed as a result of sabotage would not have happened. And the most painful aspect is that those that sabotaged are still gallivanting in our cities, in our villages, in our towns today. They cannot be told. They are gallivanting in America, in Europe, in Asia, all over the world. They don't care. But I just want to thank God that you are here today. And if you are good enough to sabotage our people, to eh, misinform our people, to send them to their early grave, you will be held accountable to explain yourself in the court. This is the way to go. That aside, eh, I hear somebody when they talk say, one of the honorable members, when they, when they talk say, it is P one brother, when they provoke say, eh, you don't tire, see this kind of thing where it happens. All tire and say, they confuse, all go balance offense. Bruh, you should say you follow this intelligence, man, Biafran, when they, they talk so. Because of my mind eh, are the reason somehow, you understand? I be for your mind eh, you know reason I say? Enemy does support your weakness. They don't support your weakness, they don't support our weakness like this. My accountability and transparency. I've got the tire now, I'd say all hand over your freedom because enemy support your weak, your weakness. Bruh, they fear me, you just need to say, you know, you, you know, because say it goes there. I was say your, your muna, I look on me, you bet. I don't go talk and you understand? I know what talk I make, you know, be like say, I go to that kind of thing. But understand say, my, your weakness, don't be my weakness, so, me, I don't agree. Because me, I know the stand of the charter and the bylaws of the Biafran government today that is taking us to USB. I know the stand of the law regarding the eh, the matter of accountability and transparency. I also know the stand of law. We need massive, not the kind of before, the Colombia from Kenya, that is the kidnapper. I go and down to Abuja, you understand? I see the language for there today, so. When you talk about accountability, about eh, transmitter, following the transmitter grow leg, wakanta Abuja, you understand? So, me, I know Palestine, you understand? If run a accountability and transparent, transparency. I will know the stand of the prime minister, who all of us are singing praise today. Who all of us, they claim, whether we love her, we no love her, we claim say we love her. We still know his stand though. When they make a living dead, bastard with his gang, you understand? See there, what accountability like this say? I thought PM, bastard from another corner. I say this, this guy, eh, Jew man, eh, Jew man, eh, I see most poisonous. Walk on, carry formation, go give enemy, you understand? Are you present here now, and all of us there now? Oh, sure, I didn't reason like this now, bro. Oh, don't be a prisoner for flush ballet. Living, living dead, enter toilet, you have them again. Oh, you are gone there, don't be a prisoner of eh, you the same eh, weak point where you say enemy support. They still handle them over to Ngosorabeze. Where we say he did strike, you know, they are during December, I be with new person for this place. Not really this bra they talk to. To us, many people, we see the reasoning on this kind of line of reasoning eh. You be on neck, Ben, I would you be, like, say you don't follow for this mad white Biafran, so they talk bad. My your weak point, enemy support, got it, so talk to you, all go balance offense. Why we do, why we rise up? People don't get China, Ngosi law, you the hear of Ngosi today? Nah, nah, he say one go give accountability for call today. Know the year I watch it, I watch it, raise fund, accountability. After that one again, they still hand over, give eh, eh, Madame, Rafael Ajiri, eh, eh, Wanda, va, va, va. Ah, Choma, Ruby, Iroby, Tony Unadi, Abizubi, I've been, what it be the name say? I'll be Ruby, eh, Ruby Unadi. And eh, Mama Nigeria, I don't know, they hand over, I give them, you know? That the weak point, that, that they select them on them university, they give their, say, bro. Like, say this boy, they don't they unite to. You dare they, not, not let us change that for you, better get it to work. Go do what is supposed to, drop accountability there, you understand? Because they know any time eh, where Biafran will unite like this eh. Eh, drop the accountability issue eh, or people go break away, run away with some eh, pepper and money be that. So, say they go hijack account, chopper with website, you understand? So, people say eh, eh, go discourage, see they tire, they all go balance offense. So, you don't know, it's like a weak point eh, I fear you, bro. You know, because of Martin, I love my brother. I nearly say me turn that fire devil, you understand? You don't be devil, change your mindset eh, anybody wants to get this mindset. No reason now, come from that place. Plus, check your thinking with the laws and fire down. I had a head with a much of freedom, you hear me so? I dropped the mic eh, APN. Okay, never well. Mama, I'm sorry, look, boy, I'm a man who, oh, girl, mama, money, I'm okay, who, mama, mama, yeah, 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 don't, I went, I'm, I, I didn't give. Um, I'm the one, no, I don't understand that move. I'm a woman, I'm okay, who, eh. My woman, I'm okay, eh, yeah, someone, eh, but my woman, I'm okay, who, Nadi, come on. Eh, I'm not, I'm ready, I do me, eh. Also, maybe you're. Well, I'm never well. He grew, I'm not cool, eh. It's a cover, who, eh. I was, I was, yeah, yeah, because I mean, I, I started to cook, but I made, eh, eh, whether, eh, top of the web, eh, eh.
Of belongings. We have seen people that are resolute and steadfast and unmovable. We want to promise you that the millions we go, millions we stay, other people will stay come. What's our Mudika number? Come where be, what be your number? Thank you so much for what you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, you're welcome. Uh, what I'm like, are you still have something to chip in? Yes, we want to invite the APM now for closing remarks. Go on, you have the mic. I want to, uh, okay, no, uh, I'm like, I got, okay, I want to kill you. You have something to say.
But is it called the number?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if it's the old, if it's an old hand or new one, it has been up.
Okay, I'm asking her to unmute.
Hello.
You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah, good evening. I come again. I don't know whether our information minister made an announcement of update from Iberi eighty. Because I came late.
He did, he definitely did.
Twenty-five thousand AJ.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank, oh, thank you, thank you.
Appreciate you so much.
Yeah.
So, um, honorable minister, uh, please, can you take the mic and chip in something and invite the APM for closing remarks? I think we, I will have covered a lot today and many thanks to all that make our time to attend this occasion. We are grateful. It is never, you've demonstrated that it is never for Aludu alone.
Sorry, sorry, I have a sorry before you.
Have this spoken?
Uh, who?
But what you just gave one, one hundred AJ. Just see it here now.
Uh, who?
Honorable Goji.
Okay, okay.
That's from USA, giving us a hundred AJ, please.
Can we, can we hear from him?
Uh, yes, if you want to speak, yeah, we can, uh, we can hear from him now, let's say.
Now we got it, can you, can you speak up, I, uh, at work?
Maybe, maybe it's our work, but he, he, his hand is not up, let me see.
Um, I've, I've sent him a request and then like he's not there or something.
Is it hundred AJ or hundred thousand?
One hundred AJma, one hundred AJma.
AJma, not AJ.
AJma, yes, thank you.
Okay, maybe he's out work, maybe he can't speak now, uh, but
Yeah, I do this so.
Yeah, it's really, it could be his at work. So, and the information minister too is now reachable. Uh, honorable, uh, APM, are you, uh, within reach to give us a closing remark? Uh, I think let us, uh, invite. Let us, let us, uh, uh, listen to you and do while APM come.
Before the zoo came into existence, before Nigeria, something was amalgamated. What was that thing that was amalgamated? They have amalgamated, they must tell us what they amalgamated, what those things were before they amalgamated them.
And if, if, uh, somebody have something to chip in, word of encouragement and advice, you have the mic now. Uh, while we wait for APM and the information minister to to tune in. Both of them, uh, okay, uh, okay, then I input number, go on.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Something is being, please can, okay, thank you, uh, thank you so much, uh, Mazzy. Thank you for your consistency. In fact, uh, um, Aludu, Aludu, I give you, I give it to you, okay? I love those who are working hard, yes, and I support them. So that is who we are. You are working hard very well and I appreciate this. Most of you, I was. You see, Biafrans, there are something, uh, when we on space sometime, there's something I used to observe, you know? Some people, if you are doing something, this, this is what we are. Those who come to tell you, I like you, I praise you, I want, they, I think, don't allow them to distract you. The Saboto are come from those angles very well, you know? Those who are, you know, I think you are such, such a type who always, uh, want obeis to people telling you, praising you, I like you. You are not, you don't have business to be in the frontline. I don't care for that like, you know why I say this? Does you say, I don't like you again, I don't like you again, I don't like, I asked one guy here yesterday, no, their, their first day. I said, all this thing you are saying about this man, can you put your life online? In fact, at least you are true of what I'm saying, right? That means, can you exchange your life if this thing you are saying is not true? Let you, let, let your life, let you perish. Can you do it? Since yesterday, that, you listen to that audio, you did not reply. You keep moot. So, you see, I want us to, you know, this time around, with no political correctness, what is facing us is a disaster threat. They have, they are, eh, 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 closing and circling us, war of extermination. This is not just, uh, any conquest or war, it is war of extermination and change of demography. If we fail, after us, there will be no order that will fight after us. No order, because what we are doing is, look at what we are doing in Middle East. Our ancestors say, who's not amalgamated, again, I wear the Ebu and Aldo. Eh, blasphemous who don't know how to, look at the tail of the kite or, eh, 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 ego. You understand how to do it. Look at Middle East, who fought to keep Nigeria one. They wiped them out of the village and they changed them of the village. They go to their D B camp and begin to rape them there and kill the men that are also there. Do you think that they will have anybody to, eh, after this set of people that you see now? Let me tell you something. We are, we don't care the name you call me and I don't need your like and I don't need your praises because Saboto always come to distract you with those things. Focus, my people, because if we fail, our race is exterminated, we are gone. If our land is taken away from us, where is your lesson? Our lesson, where, if you are lesson, they not say you as a lesson. If you lost that place, your race is gone. Because that is where that guarantee this, the existence of your race and sustainability of your race. It, it is better, I lost fifty of me, fifty million of me than lost, that person who is to give you money to stop fighting for your freedom, your ancestral land. That is to say, uh, uh, right, that is what they mean, because African could be a robber. If that one is more pressured than your freedom and that land, why can't he keep the money? Why is he giving you? Let us use our, at least I'm telling you, a name Gloramas isn't a school, England isn't a school, what are we doing? We, when we were in IPAB one family commander control, we complained. Now we have standing order, we have bylaw, we have charter. Of which even if you are done the, you ask question, you must know what your loss is. Whether the person, that, that actually the person is taking, whether I have, eh, eh, your law back it up. Before you ask, even to ten people, you must find the truth and stand where your law stands. It's somewhere with that law, it can never mislead, no one will mislead you. Do you know why I promised I was dancing? Dancing because after reading the charter, he say his mind, even if I'm not here, if my people follow this charter, nobody will mislead them. That is what is, why is dancing? And anybody who come and tell you. Sir?
No, I said exactly, exactly.
It's okay, sir. If anybody come and tell you, he doesn't know where to stand, he doesn't know where to follow. He's a moron, not serious. And if he sit on the first, let that first, he said, what is that, Angame is this, I'm not fighting again, I'm not the fighter again. Oh, wow. Look at that now, what's happening? Right, who are you fighting for before? If you say you not fight again, who, who you, who, who the loss, nobody you. See me, you see, well, if I say something, not understand what you go on and say, it is a, it is a fight for me. You the fight for, you the fight for APM, you the fight for, um, uh, Abrawa. Now you are fight, you the fight your own, your own goodness. If you say you not fight, I will say you go be, you'll be slave, Flanigo crush you. And let me tell you something. See, you know why when they keep people, they put their picture, video, you see what, where they behave, oh man, nobody, they behave them, they shout out like, what, what? I don't dare, they say, they, they caught me, I go, I go grant them, I may weather, I go consult big blender. I may weather, I can consult it, big blender, if you tie their leg, I tie their hand together, I would say that, oh, put your head, I go grant them, I start to grant Flanee. As we said, they caught, they put fear in my table. Do you not be afraid of it? As you are looking at them, they're cutting, they're, they say you go grant them, I go grant them, I go consult it, the blender, I go use grant them, and I, I must do it. I must do it, you see, I'm telling you the truth. You must tell them, say that they can, listen, I will be, I'll call them, I will, I will blend them like a, like a hot dog, hot dog. And so I will tie their leg, put their head inside that blender. So by myself, I can do that my way there, yes, I, my people, ruthless. It's you who's win at last, we have handshake. If Donald Trump handshake, a little, ten, ten million dollars on his head, how much more you in your ancestral land? If you are looking political correctness, or who like you, or who hurts you, or who praise you, let me tell you something, we distracted. As for Saludo, Saludo, you are, this is not the first time, you have been doing image maker for Flanee. You are educated moron, that has been controlled by uneducated, your education is useless, Saludo. By the way, by the way, by the way, who are your siblings? You know, your siblings? My people, anybody in our land today that is valid detention election. Valid detention election, may the land destroy you. We have sent you to mark, mark, mark your face, any owner of Buddha or executive div or, uh, uh, IB. All of you that do contact anything, if we hear you say you can pay for anybody in that land, the land Nigeria will happen to you, Eastern Ta. If you not know, say, we don't conduct reference, so we there, now I do liberation and recognition, then, I'm, I'm going to bend your mouth. Okay, don't ever dare to say you want to campaign in our land. Okay, anybody valid detention Nigeria is your worst enemy, is worse than Flanee Caliphate. Peoples, if you don't know the danger of sabotage, Saboto are, one sabotage can take the life of one million people. Saboto is worse than your enemy that come to kill you, Saboto is worse than any other. The worst enemy you have is sabotage, Saboto's. So if you the crush them, no mercy for them. I am waiting for the law to have it, well, yes, against these people, this Saboto's because they don't consider what you be suffering when they block our defense force from getting funds. They don't consider it. So if you, I hear you say, you can't talk anything in favor of them, I'm telling you, in I'm also, a woman that see the lion. I tell you.
Not so, not so.
We are not looking anybody face. What is at stake is existential threat, our land, we are facing a danger threat. This is another dangerous moment of our race. Dangerous moment of our race, bloody and dangerous moment of our race. If we fail, the next thing we see, extermination of race, will no longer exist. They will take over our land, change the name, kill the other one, the one that survived, they forced them into Islam. As a slave, the language they want you to speak, you speak. Whatever they want you to do, you do, because you are a slave. So then, who do you think will remain in our race? When they change the name, change of demography, no longer Hebrew, no longer longer is, no longer is, no longer is, no longer is, then who will remain as yours? If you know what is coming, don't look anybody face and let me tell you something. If you stand on my way, I'm a point to be seen. I'll grant you like hot dog. Don't, don't ever dare, what you are trying to dispose of me is my existence, my life, the life of my people and our born generation. So, if I, if you see any Flanee in our land, if you have the chance, send him the judgment. If you not do that, the next day may be a turn. He may be a turn. Let me warn you, once again, if you are contact creator and you don't want to see what we are doing, cowardly leave our land, if I hear you say you can pay for anybody. Not that, uh, I will chop you, first of all, physically, some hand will touch you first, before that one will happen. Don't try, good number.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, do you even know what baffled me most recently, I, one of the crimes, they said that APM commit is, uh, is terrible, is terrible to, to hear. Then said that one of the crimes is that, uh, uh, people now love APM more than the PM. We now think, think saying APM, uh, instead of it, that he has over the PM, uh, uh, influence
That's terrible.
Uh, popularity, yes. Yes.
Can you imagine?
Can you imagine that the level of, uh, jealousy, uh, that, uh,
And be.
Good. And, and, and to wake up and say that the people now sing, sing his praise, sing for him, sing him, they say, sing, uh, singer, APM. And so, uh, he has taken over, he's now, uh, people of than, uh, than PN. That people are singing for him. It's terrible. Uh, I think, uh, let me see if I'll get, uh, PM on phone for, uh, as we just close without, uh, maybe, uh, Parawa slept off and, uh, uh, somebody can even, okay, um, uh, my, this, not so, okay, uh, uh, go on, take the mic. We are in a free, free session now.
Uh, thank you very much, my honorees and my, uh, wonderful Biafra people, our mothers and our fathers who has made this, uh, day possible. Uh, Mazzy, Kudnamba, my own lovely brother. No, there is no, there's no any other thing that we are wishing ourselves rather than, you know, our freedom, rather than Biafra. And of course, that is what I pray for you, my brother, because you have just said it all. Uh, and I just needed to support you and, uh, and add a little bit to what you have just said. And it's also a reminder to, to those stooges and those saboteurs or the upcoming saboteurs. You know, it's just a warning and a message to them, just, uh, I'm just going to, uh, make it, uh, uh, very equal so that, uh, it will not look and see if maybe we are the one that is, uh, greedy or we are the one cheating or we are the one fighting for something that, uh, you know, know, that maybe nobody loves to fight for or nobody wants or maybe rather themselves or maybe even them that said does not even, uh, uh, want freedom or maybe they don't even like, like what we are doing. So now, uh, yeah, the message is that I just want those, especially those stooges, the governors, the, uh, errant boys, those, uh, fullani stooges that you might call yourself, find yourself as a police, you find yourself as a politician, you find yourself as a governor, any position, anything that you call yourself. It's also extending to those, uh, artists, you a musician, you are a celebrity or a celebrity or stupid beauty. Anything that you think that you are calling yourself. Uh, I just want us to, I just want to remind you that, uh, uh, there is nothing like hope. Uh, so now, um, you, you see, the same way, you all love your life, you know, and you will all do anything possible to protect it. So we just want you all to also get the same message very straight. That that is the same way, we, the Biafra people, we love our life so much. We, that is, we, we love it so precious, so dearly. And we love Biafra so much, we love our land. You know, when we are talking about our life, you know, like you people, you think that, uh, your Rolls Royce and those useless dirty marshals that you are beating on top of, uh, 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 no seaweed system and all those gotha, those smelling, uh, uh, this thing. You think that that one is life, you think that when you surrender yourself, when you surround yourself with those terrorists, those terrorists in uniform, you think that you are, you are, you are, you have arrived. Let me tell you, you, the difference between we and you is that you see, our life is in Biafran land. You see that land that the fullani, all these occupiers, even the whole world is trying to, uh, you know, uh, 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 you know, uh, in, in fleet every manner of injustice upon us. You see that land? That is the reason why, the more, the more they come, the more we cherish and the more we protect, the more we love it, the more. So I'm just trying to let you know that the same way you people love your life and you know how to gather the whole terrorists and to protect yourself and the, make sure you build your house and carry armor tank to be patrolling instead of a normal car, you understand? Eh, that is the same way we, Biafran people has risen up and get it very clear. Because this is a, a very strict message, because if, if earlier you get it clear, the better for all of you. That is the same way, just measure it to go to bed and think about it, measure it, the same way you are afraid to die and you will do anything possible to protect yourself. That is the same way we, the Biafran people has decided that since you people have refused to say that we will not drink water and drop cock in our own land. You yourself, you will not drink water or not even drop cock in our own land.
Come on, man.
So, eh, 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 the earlier, the better. So those of you that, uh, is thinking that maybe we are joking or maybe we just come here, maybe we don't have work, we just want to spend time, well, we are just ranting or maybe anything. Make haste now, that is, there is time, make haste now, pack your load, pack your baggage and leave Biafran land. There is nothing like election in Biafran land. That one is not an avoid and I have never remember the last time the Biafran government in exile or the de facto government in the homeland has uplifted the activities of every, eh, illegitimate, eh, Nigerian terrorist state in our land. Remember, they have repented the, eh, eh, the de facto government in the homeland, we have banned, eh, eh, no selling any government official, eh, 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 any Nigerian terrorist state government official, it is, is still remember to today. Any checkpoint remain banned to today. Eh, or any Nigerian, any armed terrorist carrying, eh, 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 Nigerian agent in, in our land. Whether in uniform, whether in rata, you are, you are banned in Biafran land, within the forty states of Biafran land. So I'm just reminding you, in case maybe the day, it, it will, it will happen, you will not say you do not know. So, eh, so I just want everybody to, I just want them to get it very clear. So the message is that the same way you all have, we, we, we protect yourself. That is the same way we, the Biafran people, will rise up and defend our land because that Biafran land represent our life. Without that Biafran land, we does not exist. So that is the reason why we will make sure we do everything possible to protect that land, which is our existence, the existence of our forefathers. And that is where our born children, our, our generations, we live, they will come. We will make sure we defend it with every, everything that, that, that is in us. Since you people say we will not, eh, eh, sleep, we see how you people sleep. Thank you very much. Uh, Mazzy, Kudnamba, my brother, you, you spoke very well. I'm not going to just, uh, drop my mic without, uh, you know, supporting because at least we are in a battle, a very, very serious battle of the, and that we are in war. So I'm going to just, uh, add to what I have already contributed before, I will add five Ajima just to support this, eh, eh, little ways of encouragement. So, Biafrans, please.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Uh, so, uh, yes, thank you, thank you, Mazzy, also. Uh, I think, uh, both APM and, uh, and Parawa are busy, uh, somewhere. Uh, I would like to call, uh, uh, sorry?
I met here, I want more stuff for clock, please.
Yes, that is what I'm saying, so, uh, one, one that Betty, can you just give us a brief, uh, closing remark so that, uh, we close? Are you available?
This is, uh, this is, uh, twenty-two minister twelve, twenty-eight minister twelve, this.
Okay, um.
Okay, uh, maybe, uh, okay, uh, thank you, fellow Biafrans. Uh, once again, we want to, uh, appreciate everyone that is, uh, here today. Uh, there is not much again to add to what, uh, has been said or to what we already know. Uh, what, the only thing we plead and, uh, beg everyone of us to maintain is resoluteness, to remain resolute, focused and unrelenting. These are the key factors to get us to where we want to be, to get us to our goals. Please, um, we should not mind any side thoughts any longer. As long as we know what we want, we should be defiant. We should, uh, continue, maintain the pace. Uh, there is, uh, they're saying that, uh, also, um, a hint that where you should not stop at every backing dog to throw stone because you may not get to where you are heading to. So some of these, uh, run things could be distractions, so we should just know which ones to, uh, give credence to and which one to just overlook. In so doing, we will be faster in our move and in, and the pace that is expected of us. Uh, the Biafrans know all. Some are making the mistake of, uh, undating this race. Intelligence of this, the Biafrans. You don't undare it. They are like people with ears to the ground. They see things that you think they don't see, they hear, do think they don't hear. But if you understand them with good understanding and knowledge of life, you will get along. But if you make if you want to drive them into your motive, into what you want, you'll be a failure. That is something we should all know. That right now, as we are, we are in a war, this is a wartime. So many things have been said, so many narratives, so many examples, instances given that should have made us know to realize exactly where we are and how to get about it. But many of us are still, uh, not knowledgeable enough to comprehend. Uh, it is too bad, it's unfortunate, but thank God that few of us, few of us know where we are heading to and know how we can get there. So I thank you all for, uh, taking and maintaining the pace with the help of Tukoke Abiyama, uh, we should all get there, we should all or will be able to restore this land, this God-given land. For our children, for our grandchildren, for the next generation, that's all what it's about. And not only for us, but for those, it is more of philanthropic, it is a philanthropic gesture and a good way to fight for others to live. The reward is heavenly, it come from above. So, um, we should not expect the reward uh, from this earth, it is going to come from heaven. And when that is done, when we achieve that, all our names will be written in gold by Tukooko Kadia and we will all take the glory of the, uh, of this restoration. So fellow Biafrans, thank you and welcome once again. And I will say, as we are ending, I'll bid everyone of us goodbye and safe journey to wherever we are heading to for those who are still in the road. Uh, while we are closing, I would like to call, uh, uh, Honorable, can you give us a closing prayer, please?
Is this the day?
Uh, that's what I'm trying, I don't know.
Let's pray, let's pray, let's pray, let's pray.
Okay, 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 okay.
Father God, we want to thank you. Father God, we want to thank you so much for there, we are present in our midst. We thank you because of the people that we have touched in the heart, because the Bible said, the heart of a man is in the hand of the Lord. And he promoted as the wave of the sea, who you brought, the zeal, you give the zeal, enthusiasm. And the eagerness to come here, we appreciate you, thank Lord. We pray you replenish whatever things that come out from their pockets, at next time we gather, or the maybe we gather, others that gather. That would do exploit like this, we thank you so much, as they are going home, we pray God that you bless them. All the problem that will come and eat their money, Father, I pray that this money they have give here will take out that problem out of their way in their life and their families, in Jesus' name. And so, Father, we pray, Lord, that you guide us, help our defense force, help our eh, leaders. Help our PM, help our Union Do, all the people that are castigated in the, in the dungeon. Father, we pray that you help them to come out and give us granted the love of our hearts, which is Biafran. We thank you, Lord, because you know your answer, but we pray in the name of Tushuk Tukuki Gobioma. He said.
Thank you all very much. And uh, well, thank you.
God bless you. Thank you. Was he okay?
Yes.
I have forwarded the whatever I recorded, they be due to that time, they not talking any show. I want the misery, so compare, I have sent forward the.
Yes, uh, I will, I will get in touch with one that Betty, because I myself, I did not take records.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm, I'll get in touch, I will, I'll link her up to send us the list in the position.